Order the public hearing of Tuesday, July 28, 2020, for the application known as The Woods Roxbury LLC for regulated and/or upland review activities associated with a proposed six lot subdivision at 206 North Street Roxbury, map 21 lots 044 and 015. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow the public to have access and input in to this application, which is six lots on 68 acres. This, there was a previous application that was denied by the commission. That application had a road that met town standards. Well, not really, that's why it was denied. And it had 11 lots, but there was a 12th lot because the White House that is there now was proposed to stay its own lot. This proposal is for six lots. The White House would have to come down to allow access for six driveways that'll come off of Route 199. Just some notes here for public hearings. The wetland commission jurisdiction is only wetlands. I know I've read some comments that has to do with sightlines and the town, how could the town let the, you know, what's the town involvement? It's a state road, so the town doesn't have any involvement in the approval of the driveways other than Barbara will approve, will have to approve the mailbox numbers. Somebody, somebody's got some U2 thing going out there. So it's a state road, they need a DOT permit to get the driveways in. And no engineer in the world would propose a subdivision where driveways couldn't be approved by DOT, which is very black and white. You have to have so much in the sightline, distance, things like that. Wetlands is very gray and that's why our regulations kind of give us some leeway. But our jurisdiction is only wetlands. We do have authority of the upland areas, but only if there's shown direct impact to the wetlands. So we, we could regulate the upland review area, but we can't regulate it like it was a wetland. There has to be an impact would, would occur to the wetlands for us to regulate it. If you want to speak, we, we have a list, we got the list, but it, but that doesn't mean anybody on the list can't speak. Everybody is allowed to speak. If you're on Zoom, just raise your hand, there's a hand icon. If you're not on Zoom, you're on the phone, just let me know when the time comes. We want everybody to be heard, but I'm asking everybody, you know, this Zoom stuff, it's hard, it's very hard. I gotta congratulate Karen and Julie and Jimmy Herbert, Herbert for all the hard work. It really, I, I don't think people understand the work that goes into this with this new coronavirus age. It's very hard on a small town with, with a limited staff and part-time. Some people are part-time, but, but they really are troopers, Julie, Karen, it just, you did an awesome job. An amazing amount of material came in. I hope the commission read all that. It's a lot to read. But I want everybody to be civil, please, like we are in Roxbury. I really don't need to say that, but I'm just giving a warning. Andy's here, that's good. Hi, Andy.
Hi, Russ.
Good to see you.
Good to be seen.
Yep. So, um, so let's speak one at a time to the professionals, the, the experts. Let's be respectful to each expert and not get disrespectful at all, or I'll shut you down. That's, um, you know, by the book and I'm also, I don't put up with, with any disrespect in our meetings. And that's what the commission asked from me, from me, and that's what I did. So we're gonna move on and as you know, it's a six lot subdivision. So Mark, Mark from Dymar, are you here? Mark, what's your name?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, I see you, I hear you, you got your mask on, good for you.
Try this during the meeting.
So Mark, why don't you give a brief overview? And, and I'm asking the experts and people from the public, please get to the point.
Russ?
Yep.
You didn't seat them, seat us.
No, I'm, I'm doing an introduction, so I will.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Just please get to the point. The commission has a mass of information that we had to go through here. What'll help us in the public hearing and making our decision is giving us the, the facts and the point. To go on and on and give us a lot of fuzzy stuff is not gonna help us. So I'm asking everybody to try to be piffy, as, as my old friend Bill O'Reilly used to say, let's get to the point. So I'm gonna seat the members. Go ahead, Sue, why don't you begin? Say your name.
I think Sue's muted.
Sue Fitch.
Okay. Andy?
Andy Engel.
Rob?
Rob Horgan.
Um, John, you, you have stepped down because you're a member of the land trust, correct?
Right.
Anybody else from the commission on this call? So we do have a quorum, we squeaked by, we do have a quorum. It is the same group of members that were at the initial meeting when the application was received last month. All the members did do a sit walk. We did them separately, so they were not public meetings. So with that, we are ready to begin. So Mark, um, let, let me first say, I said the members, let me first say, there was a legal notice. Karen, are you on? Or Julie?
Yes. Karen's unmuted now.
Karen, good.
There was a legal notice that was posted on our website.
Okay, so it, and, and all the adjoining neighbors were notified by the applicant?
Yes, they were. We have receipts from Mark showing mailings to all of them.
Okay, good, then we're, we're on, we're on course here. All right, then we'll move to Mark. Mark, why don't you give us a brief overview of the project, please?
For the public record, my name's Mark Lankor. I'm with Dymar, Principal Engineer, and been practicing for the last 35 years, basically in the private sector business and in this general region. Is it appropriate at this time, Mr. Chairman, that we should just maybe just put up some exhibits, or do you want me to briefly go through just an outline?
No, absolutely, do the exhibits. Let people see the plan.
So, so I gotta get, the screen's gotta be shared with me, right?
I'm sharing with you right now. And go ahead, the, the screen is yours.
Okay. Of course, this is always a treat. So I'm going to be bringing up drawings. This is our drawing set and I will start with C2. I'm going to increase the size a little bit. Can everybody see that?
No.
No.
To see your woods subdivision file.
You can't see the drawing?
Click on it.
Are you seeing the drawing now?
No.
No.
You're just seeing the directories, Mark.
What now, Michael?
Just the directories are showing up.
Oh, just the directory is showing up on the side?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Ah, jeez. It doesn't help. Let me see if I can minimize stuff. Let me just, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to go back and try to pull these up one at a time. So that's gonna be the difficulty here. If I can't, so you cannot, you see?
We see your bows.
You can see this, right?
Yeah.
You see that whole screen, right?
But if you click on it, nothing opens up.
You're kidding.
Not to us, no.
Go ahead, click on it.
This is all our drawings and a, and a list.
Yeah, it's gonna take a while to come up and probably takes a while.
It's a, it's a, let me see, I, I will find the drawing elsewhere if you don't mind.
I have C2 and I have them broken out from the last meeting. So if you don't mind, I'm gonna take, I have C2, C3 and C4.
That's fine.
Let me share that.
Yep.
And I, it's telling me I can do it. There we go. Is that the correct one you wanted up?
Uh, you wanna share that with, you wanna see it?
Oh, that doesn't help.
We, we see just the, the file name, we don't see the actual file.
Same thing, okay, let me try this again.
I can get that.
Oh. Weird.
That is weird.
It, it does take time, especially if it's a large file. I've had this happen at work where it could take a couple minutes for it to.
Yeah, I was, you're right, Russ, I was in a meeting in Greenwich last night and we brought up a drawing, it took.
There it is.
There we go.
There it is.
There we go.
It took about 15 minutes for it to come up. So, um, if you want to just increase the size of this a little bit, that would be Okay. And maybe just move it up a little bit. There we go, perfect, perfect, that's good. So this C2 actually represents the property, which is comprised of about 64.8 acres. The total amount of wetlands that are on the site, which are noted in the dark green, is about 4.7 plus acres. And the upland review area, which is in the lighter green, is about 22 plus acres. Areas that you see in the darker and the red are actually areas where there's heavily exposed bedrock. Not to say that bedrock in the general facility may also be shallow, but these are the areas which are mapped that show that they're completely exposed at the surface. And the noted areas in gray are the steep slopes, which comprise of about 11 and a half acres of the property. That's anything in excess of 25%. We've also noted on the plans, the soil types, obviously they come from soil survey and they vary in, in, in types between Foster and Cat and Chatfields, Charlton Chatfields and Charlton Hollis. I'll let Mr. Kenny speak specifically as regards to wetlands. But this gives you a general setting. This is on the west side of Route 199, directly across from Wakeley Road. The, there is a couple of existing dwellings on the property. There is the old White House that we know, really at the, at the bend of the property, which, you know, many have made note that, you know, there are issues with sightlines in that general area. I know DOT has had issues with keeping those trees trimmed or trying to anyways. And then the, there is a small cottage that currently is being occupied and rented. And that's just a little bit north of the existing, existing house. So, so with that, we basically have two wetland quarters, primary wetland quarters that are all tributary to Battle Swamp Brook. These migrate down through to the eastern, to the western property, from eastern to western. There are predominantly two sources here that are culverted, then one to the north is through a culvert under Route 199 that migrates into what is the western side and what traditionally we call is the second lot or B lot that has been recently sold. The one wetland system to the, to the south travels through a 24-inch culvert, again, tributary to Battle Swamp Brook. And all of these wetlands come together at some point and actually connect with the Brook itself. There is a small basin, just a small pipe that's just north of the house that DOT has that crosses at that point and discharges through a, through a pipe directly to, to the wetlands on the west side. So with that comes the proposal. And if we might want to put up C3, I believe it is.
Okay, let me.
C3, that would be, or C4, actually C4 would be fine. It's actually more, would be more inclusive of showing everything on the lot and including the wetland impacts, or the, the, not wetland impacts, but the regulated area impacts.
Let me a moment while I'm sharing it.
Takes time.
Oh, it takes time, it does. But we live in an age in which we do not have patience for things that take time.
Oh, still can't see that.
That's right.
All right, so.
Julie, could you make it bigger a little?
There's a delay on the system tonight, there we go.
It's every night.
Yes.
In any system.
Yeah.
Okay.
Down a little?
That's beautiful.
There you go. Good job. Well, too far.
I, I know, and it's so funny, it's like I'm trying to get it just right.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, so this shows a six lot subdivision. And I think I want to just start with a little, you know, background, as we all remember the prior application was, that was denied, was for 11 lot subdivision. And then there, the house, the existing house was retained. So in essence, real, in reality, it was a total of 12 building lots that were proposed, in which the house remained. And then two lots to the north, which is our lot five and six, would have come off of Route 99. And then there was a road that traversed down towards the area where we call Lot 1, crossed the wetlands and created the additional lots internal along a, what was to be a public road. Yeah, so when you compare the alternatives, at that time, you know, there was consideration for looking at other alternatives. But in the, the fact that it was denied, the client or my, the client came to me, the applicant, and we developed a new plan that included six lots. And that's also the removal of the existing house. So in essence, we are really only creating five new lots, not six when you take it in totality.
Mark, for the record, you were not the engineer on the original application, correct?
And that is true, Mr. Chairman, I was not the engineer at that time.
Okay, just for the record.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this, this plan is a, it's a dramatic difference to what was originally proposed, both in scale and in terms of impervious coverage and in terms of the breadth of the application itself when it comes to the, the overall, overall impacts to wetlands and watercourses. This plan has no direct impacts to wetlands whatsoever. There's no discharges to, directly to wetlands and there are no direct crossings, cuts and fills, et cetera. The primary activity that we have before the commission is activities that are in the regulated area. And that is the 100-foot buffer. And those activities are highlighted here in the orange color. The total, total impact in terms of area, impact to the upland review area is about 22,000 and change square feet, roughly a little over 0.5 acres, a half an acre. That's a half an acre on 64.8 acres, of which 4.7 acres are wetlands. This is dramatic change from what occurred under the prior application. Yes, we do have our challenges on this site with steep slopes, you know, rock outcroppings, you know, to say that, you know, that those are impediments that should deny development is completely false. The other area that is noted, the primary area of impact is really on Lot Number One in terms of impact to the upland review area, that is the one that creates the most and it's because of the way the driveway needs to traverse the property along the contours in order to gain its access to, which is a very nice site. I will say that all the houses on this property, where we have located these home sites, are in areas where you walk the property, you say that's a home site. We're not looking to be putting home sites on the steepest of slopes on this property or in areas that are suspect and would create not a great home site for anybody that wanted to purchase the lot. When you walk the property, Lot Number One in specific, there's a terrace there, the house is situated there, there's a, a, a nice area for a septic system. And the driveway is designed for Lot Number One where the driveway pitches towards the southerly side of the driveway. It does not pitch towards the wetland side. So that the impact itself, any drainage that comes off of that slope is really crossing a fill slope through a vegetated area that ultimately will overland sheet flow, overland sheet flow, not concentrated, to the wetland that is to its north. The closest point there is 35 feet. The other area that is, has, you know, area that shows the majority of the impact on the site is where our existing house is. That house and all the infrastructure related to it is primarily in the upland review area of the wetland that is to our west. Nothing associated with the wetland on this property, but keeping in mind that we did not discount anything on the westerly property in terms of showing where the upland review area is. That area there is gonna be where the house is gonna be removed. The well will be taken out, any of the infrastructure will be taken out, and we're gonna convert that area to a couple of things. We've had driveway access coming down in that area. The reason for the driveway access is to the point of sightlines. It's the most, it makes the most sense at that curve to actually put driveways there so sightlines can be sawed in both directions in excess of 450 feet. So that's a great improvement of what's there now and it will be a great improvement when these driveways go in. But in addition to that, we're introducing at that same location a water quality basin for, for treatment before water leaves the site and discharges across North Street to what is now the Lot, Lot A to the south that is owned by my client. And easement's been granted, is being granted in order to allow for that discharge, which will then go south into an open meadow area that has very mild slopes and very good soil conditions. And there is, that is some distance, it's several hundred, 250 feet to the closest wetland at that point. So we've taken great liberty to make sure that even on the discharges that are coming from the site, that we are taking the liberty to utilize the resources that we have to minimize impacts. The other impacts are very minor, very, very minor in terms of the upland review area. Again, on Lot Number Four, we have a little bit of a fill slope that goes into the upland review area, but that is actually behind the existing cottage. The existing cottage situates its driveway and its, its premise, the cottage itself is situated 100% in the upland review area. And the activity has been there for, for decades with no detrimental impact to the wetlands, which it adjoins, which is a finger off of the, of the wetland to the north. That impact that we're having is a fill slope where there is no concentrated flow going off of that slope and therefore we believe that that impact is minor. The other impact is associated with Lot Number Three. It's a lot that basically has a long, has the longest driveway, it's around 1,200 feet that goes up to the, the upper, upper sections of the property. And, and I know that for most, that the concern has always been, and the discussion has always been about a vernal pool that is situated up on the wetlands directly to the, to the northeast side of the property. That is duly noted in the prior record and discussions of, with my client, is we've done everything to avoid having any close contact with that wetland system as the house is situated on the downhill side of a slope in which none of the drainage from this site would affect or be introduced to that wetland system. It's, it sits again up on a terrace, the grading, we've been able to fit a nice, tuck in a nice house up there in which the grading is, would be commensurate with anybody that does any development in Roxbury. And then with the, that, that really speaks to the, to the actual impacts in terms of, we say, direct impacts into the upland review area. The, the project itself, and we have discussed this in our application, is that in terms of you always look at prudent and feasible alternatives. But I get must, you must keep in mind that prudent and feasible alternatives really are associated with a direct impact. It's not something that is arbitrary, that every piece of property that has any activity in a regulated area, meaning the upland review area, you got great liberty to have discussions about prudent, feasible alternatives. You're really limited in that discussion. But for the record, we have made it known in our application that the prudent and feasible alternatives obviously included the prior application that was denied. It also could include, and I, and I say this, not to say that we would do this, but you always have to be cognizant of the fact that an affordable housing application can be brought forward in any municipality and it would have to be considered. We don't like to talk about it, but it's something that is a reality and it is an alternative that would be directly considered here. The, the other alternative that we could, we could speak to, and I will speak to that probably later after probably Mr. Trinkus comes and gives his report, I will speak directly to that. But in the prior application, Mr. Trinkus had provided a alternative that was acceptable to his client for four lots that all were accessed directly off of Route 199. Basically comprised of our lot six and five and our lot one and two. That's what it comprised of. Now those lots, specifically two and four, are challenging in the way in terms of, you know, getting a driveway up because of the, you know, rock outcropping, the topography, we've been able to thread that through and minimize any kind of impacts whatsoever. But I would have to say that that four lot subdivision that was proposed by Mr. Trinkus at that time really related to five lots because that existing house still remained. Again, we're only asking for one additional lot. So when you really look at all the alternatives, this alternative provides, I believe, a responsible use of the property. The stormwater management, management plan for this property is extensive, as much as we hear through the testimony of the interveners, experts. I've been doing this for 35 plus years. And when we take on a, a project, we provide real, you know, construction details, plans, sequencing plans. we provide real, you know, construction details, plans, sequencing plans, all in consideration of stormwater control. Because when you look at impacts, the only impact that I can see anybody can suggest here is short-term impacts. And that would be during construction. And if that was denied because of construction, then there wouldn't be a project that could ever be built in Roxbury.
So don't bring it up.
So the, the idea is, is that the, the stormwater plan that we have provided is extensive. It does what it's supposed to do in terms of not concentrating flows all in one direction and bringing them to one point. It actually bisects the property up into trying to keep it within their natural watershed of twenty-six different watersheds that we broke out in order to minimize the amount of concentrated runoff. And we have provided a sequencing plan in our, in our S and E control plans that speaks directly to the challenges that we have with developing this site. And that is really during construction, developing and constructing the driveways. So what we have done is we have provided a sequence that only allows up to three hundred lineal feet of driveway to be constructed at any point in time until it is stabilized. There is nobody that does that. That is going to give us, one, it's going to give us control. It's going to give us the ability to monitor what's going on in short segments. And it's going to limit, it's going to limit the amount of exposed earth during that period of time. With that plan, we are very confident that we are not going to have any of these, what we consider, short-term impacts to the wetlands and water courses because we're going to have control over a small area. Yes, will there be blasting going on in this site? Absolutely. You could not develop this site without cutting the rock. And nobody's going to go out there with, with a chipper. This is going to be done conventionally in accordance with state codes. There will be blasting and there will be crushing of rock and material in order to make sure that most of the material that we use on site can be reused on site and we're not always, we're not hauling it off. So the stormwater management plan looks at that. In addition to the stormwater management plan, and I've heard, you know, that in terms of rates of runoff and volumes and that sort of thing. This plan in terms of its drainage, as much as it's sixty-four point eight acres, the actual drainage area that's impacted is around thirty-four point six acres of drainage that is, you know, impacted due to the construction activities on this site in terms of, and that's not thirty-four point six acres of opening up. It's just thirty-four point six acres that affects the areas that we are, we construct for the improvements. That's a small number in terms of acreage. And the methodology that we used in doing that is the methodology that is, 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 is an approved methodology. The DOT approves it. It's a hydrological model, it's called the rational modified hydrograph, hydrograph method. And you're going to hear later from Mr. Trinkus that that's not acceptable. Well, I have a long letter that actually gives you a lot of the literature and background, the research on that, and it's definitely acceptable. We've been using it for, for years, especially on small watersheds. It allows on small watersheds, it has a tendency to overestimate the smaller flows, which in stormwater runoff, the one inch, first run inch of flush of runoff is the most important component of stormwater runoff. And this methodology actually overestimates those actual peak values.
All right, let's wait for Steve to come in so we could hear the.
We do that. So the other, the other, the other aspect of that is just in terms of what it means in terms of flows. I'm going to grab my table here. You know, we have developed the, the, the model for this site and it broke it up into three, what we call analysis points. The first analysis point is to the north, which is at the tributary that comes down to the north, right Wakely Road. The other analysis point is where the small culvert crosses the, the, the road. But actually it's to our point of concern, which is to our water quality basin at the, where the existing house is. And then the other point is for the twenty-four inch culvert and the wetlands tributary to, on the southerly side of the property. So those are three analysis points that we have looked at. And we have used the methodology that is actually documented in the Connecticut DOT manual for using that model. And our reductions along those points, AP one, which is again to the south, is a reduction from the two to a hundred year, anywhere is from eleven to sixteen percent reduction in peak rates of runoff. And the second point is a reduction of about thirteen percent at the hundred year storm, AP two. And then AP three to the north is actually a reduction, anywhere from twenty-eight to twenty-five percent. And I say that, you know, volume and, volume is one thing that people look at, peak flows is another. The regulations in the town of Southbury are focused on peak rates of runoff in terms of reductions. So we are complying with those particular tenets of your regulations. And, and the reason for it is because peak rates runoff are the culprit that actually create scouring of channels. And, and that is a, is a big, i- i- is something that you want to be able to control because additional scouring of channels includes sediment, includes additional sediment transport. And when sediment transport comes, you know, pollution transport to downstream systems. So that's the reasons why the, you know, commission, and in this particular situation on this site, which is really a channelized wetland system, there's not, except for those systems that are to the direct northeast of us, which we are having no impact or nothing to do with, we're not draining to them. The lower sections of these wetlands are really channels that have associated wet bottoms and, and, and that. So when you look at the stormwater management, the criteria of peak is, is critical, more critical in this situation than the actual volume. So.
Yep, so, so we're all clear?
Yep.
This is a subdivision application to segregate sixty-four acres into six lots, right?
Yes.
And you're asking the commission to approve at this point? And, and I just want to make this clear so we all understand. You, the activity would be, if we allow the subdivision, it gets separated into six lots. And then the lots would sell lot by lot, I would assume. So all you're asking for is the subdivision, that the subdivision be approved and that the driveways be approved. Is, is that true? Or do you want, does this application take on each house site as you see it? In other words, it'll never change?
So, so to, to, Mr. Chairman, a good, good question, good question. To your point, yes, these lots are, we're looking to get subdivision approval so the lots can be marketed. My client is not a builder. They are in the real estate investment side, but they are not builders. So this will be put up for sale. And yes, the individual lots, and, and I have noted this in my most recent letter to the commission, is that regardless of the wetland impact that you approve tonight or you, you, you approve is, or the regulated activity that you approve, we're willing to come back on each lot.
Well, you would have to.
And, 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 and I agree.
Across the street.
Yep, we agree.
Bought that, if they put the house anywhere other than would have shown on the map and the septic, they would have to come back to the commission.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I want the commission to know that, like any subdivision we've ever approved over thirty years, although we haven't approved a ton of them, we're approving the subdivision and the driveways and the utilities, which will be put in on the side of the driveways usually. That's part of the infrastructure, right, Mark?
Yes, it is.
You wouldn't only build the driveway, you would put the utility trenches.
You would bring your power up.
And then you could go from there, from wherever you put the boxes.
Right.
So we're, we're not approving where these houses are going. And we're not approving the stormwater control related to each house. That would be done at a later time. What the commission needs to look at right now is if you build the house, if, if you're going to approve a house, is it feasible, do they have the area and the right calculations that they could build there without impacting wetlands? So you're not, I just want to make it clear, you're not approving these houses. These houses are showing that they can meet zoning, planning regulations, that there is a place on this property to put the house where it's not on the side of a cliff. But, but you, really what you're approving is the subdivision. And as you know, when we approve subdivisions, we're looking at that we don't approve a subdivision that causes us issues down the road where, where we force the crossing or we cause drainage problems elsewhere. So that's what we're looking at.
Thank you very much.
Every one of these lots will have to come back to us.
And we, and we understand. We understand that, we understand that. I think one other point that I want to make is that what I have not stated is that we're providing more than ten acres of open space. Now this will be private open space, this is not going to be data to the land trust. It's going to be private open space, but the location of the open space, I think, is critical. It is in an area that actually is protecting a resource that, and the prior application was a contentious, contentious point when it was brought up because there was lot, house construction that was in close proximity of what is a vernal pool, at least it's been stated as being a vernal pool. So we are protecting that resource. And I think it's, it should be duly noted that the, you know, this was, the applicant came to me and said, we are absolutely going to protect that area. So it, it's, it's an important attribute of the application itself. Because that wetland system is actually at the headwaters of these two tributaries. So it's important that those headwaters get protected. Let's see, because I'd like to be able to, hopefully we can get on to. So, so with that, I think everybody's gotten a pretty good handle of what the application is. You know, we've submitted a slew of drawings that look at not just the wetlands, the stormwater management, will be a driveway profiles. We have a great, you know, in terms of infrastructure, in terms of the drainage system, how it's going to work. You know, where it's going to go, where we can. We've been able to tuck in areas that we can create a water, small, small, small basins that provide some detention and will provide water quality attributes as well. But you've got to find those, those little, you know, diamonds in the rough, I call them, when you're out on a site. And you need to look and take advantage of those. And we have done that. When you take a look at the overall plan for where the, some of the stormwater components are and you walk, and you walk in the site, you can see, boy, they were right, they were right on. They picked the right place, whether it's bridging between two rock outcroppings in which we created an impoundment area or it's in a natural feature that's actually on the site that makes sense to create a impoundment area for water quality. And all of this does, what it does, it actually, you know, breaks up the site, which is one of the components of any water quality system, is not to concentrate everything together, but to actually break things up. So with that, what I would like to do at this point, Mr. Chairman, is introduce to you Mr. Bill Kenny, who is our environmental consultant. And basically Bill was charged with, was to evaluate the existing conditions from the historical records. And I can tell you that there's a plethora of information in your file system. And I'm sure Karen has got a whole file drawer that's filled up with every document you can imagine. It concerns this property. So there's a lot of information. Mr. Kenny actually went through all of that information. And he's providing his own opinion based on our plan, based on history of the, of the property and the prior documentation that was in the record. But he also was taking a look at the reasons for denial. And, and comparing and doing a matrix of why the property, why the project was denied prior and what differs in this application that would suggest to the commission that you should approve this application. So with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Bill Kenny.
Good evening. I'm Bill Kenny, I'm the principal of William Kenny Associates in Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm a professional wetland scientist and soil scientist and landscape architect. I've been working in the field or in this industry for about thirty years. And as Mark has explained, I was retained to help to evaluate the existing conditions, the proposed conditions, assist with some of the design elements to help to minimize and avoid impacts to wetlands and watercourses. And then to prepare a, a report for your information and review regarding my findings. I'll say in summary, my professional opinion is that this is a very good plan, very well done, very closely designed and, and and that it is my opinion that this project will not have any adverse impacts on wetlands and watercourses. It's really been well done and a much, much less intensity of the previous proposal that you, you did review. And so what I'd like to do is just perhaps, Mark did a great job of going over many things and go through some of the highlights of, of my evaluation. If it's possible, I'd love to share my screen. I'm going to use the same drawing, but this will allow me to.
Good luck.
Guide you with my pointer.
You should, you should be able to share.
How's that?
Got it.
Must be Mark, must be Mark.
I'm just not technical savvy anymore.
So, yes, it's a beautiful forested site with two watercourses that, and the site pitches from the east to the west, steeply in some areas. And you have water, concentrated water entering the site in the northeast and then passing through a forested wetland and, and the water heads to the west via two watercourses, one that's on the northern portion of the site and one on the southern portion of the site. And within that is, is a area of wetlands in the northeast corner of the property that was previously identified as a habitat that would support the breeding and development of obligate vernal pool species. That area is right in the sweatland here. And then you have, of course, Route one ninety-nine along the western or north street, along the western property boundary. Again, about sixty-five acres of land. So if we move into the proposed conditions, in my letter that we, that I prepared and submitted to you and stated July tenth under proposed conditions, I did add a table where we have a summary comparison between the previous application in two thousand and eighteen and current application. Just want to review a few of those points and also as Mark indicated, the, your denial where you had reasons for denial in two thousand and eighteen and you had reasons for, and then you provided recommendations for alternative designs. That really was a roadmap for this, for this development. And so we also provide a table in our report where we talk about how the project addresses those reasons for denial and also addresses the various recommendations that you made. So going through some of the things that I find to be quite important with this project and why I conclude that there's no adverse impacts to the wetlands or watercourses. Some of the key things, of course, you have a reduction in the lot acreage, the lot number of the lot. or the lot number, the lot quantity by 50%. You have a complete elimination of road pavement. There was over 2,000 linear feet of road previously. There's zero road proposed today. Which, so that's a big change where now you have areas of just driveway, much narrower, much less impervious cover, which relates to much less issues with stormwater runoff. There's an increase in open space from designated open space of 30% from about 7.7 acres to 10 acres. And then a big, a really big thing, which is related to that elimination of the road is the previous application had about 8.8% of impervious cover. This application has about 2 points, only 2.6%. And that's close to a 70% reduction in impervious area. Impervious area is very important in stormwater management and protection of wetlands and watercourses. There's been numerous studies throughout the country that where people have looked at watersheds, looked at the health of streams and wetlands and what they found time after time that if you keep your impervious surface coverage within a watershed at 10%, around approximately 10% or lower, that you're going to keep your streams and wetlands healthy. And so, we are at a quarter of that threshold. And, you know, with that in mind, if you were to install all of the BMPs that Mark has designed and proposed, all of the rain gardens and subsurface infiltration chambers and all of those things, but say every one of them failed, based on all of these studies across the country, you're overall not going to have an impact on wetlands and watercourses because this is such a low-density development. And in our letter, we refer to a document, the state of Connecticut has even recognized this phenomenon. And, for example, in the northeastern part of the state, they've used impervious cover as a way to protect a watershed there. And they've used the threshold of 11%. They say, if you can keep it under 11%, that's great. If you have some areas where you exceeded 11%, you could then improve that by implementing the BMPs. So, we not only have four times below the threshold, but we have those BMPs. When you, we have belts and suspenders with regard to stormwater management after a development like this is implemented. And, you know, it was interesting to find that I know Steve Trigus is quite involved with low-impact development and I know that he's written some drainage manuals for some Connecticut towns. And he did, he recognizes the significance of impervious cover as well. He wrote the Low-Impact Development Education booklet for the town of East Granby. And in there, in that document on page four, he does recognize that you don't have adverse impacts until you exceed 10% of impervious cover. And so, I think that all of the professionals involved here are well aware of this information and it's quite clear that when you have a low impervious cover like this, that your chances of impacts are very minimal. And then when you add all the stormwater management features, you can completely avoid those impacts. Another interesting thing that was in that manual was a example subdivision where you could avoid impacts. And I think that this subdivision should perhaps be substituted for the one that's in that manual. You know, the subdivision before you, on average, it's about one lot for every, almost 11 acres. One lot for every 11 acres. The example that was used in East Granby for that drainage manual prepared by Steve Trigus, it's under five acres per lot and has multiple crossings of a wetland and a tremendous amount of activity within 100 feet of a wetland. So, getting back to our proposal, we have little to no activity within 100 feet of a wetland. It is about a half acre, as Mark described. It's 64% less than the previous proposal that was before you. And what's even more important is not just the size of that, of those activities within the upland review area. This isn't the wetland, this is just within 100 feet. You look at these different areas, which are shown in orange on this plan, in just about every case, these areas drain away from the wetland. So, although they might be, this area might be within 85 or 90 feet of this intermittent watercourse. This area, this slope is actually draining to the west. It's draining away from this. So, it is essentially more than 100 feet away from that wetland. It's outside the watershed for the wetland that that 100 feet extends from. When you look at the area along here, along North Street, where the existing house is, this activity is within the 100-foot buffer for the wetland that's across the street, entirely on the opposite side of North Street. And so, that wetland's receiving runoff from North Street. But our activity, although it's within 100 feet of that and on the opposite side of the road, we collect the water that is from the development activities in this area, collect it and direct it away from that wetland. So, again, we're, essentially, we're outside the 100 feet when you consider how the water is being managed, it's being directed away from the wetland. And then if you go down to Lot 1 here, that the impervious area for this driveway that is within the 100 feet, again, this impervious area, this driveway, the water is being pitched away from the wetland. It's being pitched back to the south and then collected and brought down along the driveway and treated and then discharged more than 100 feet away from the wetland. So, you know, just about all these areas are being directed away from the wetland. So, when you look at just the areas that might be directed, that are directed to the wetland, it's substantially less than a half an acre. So... With regard to the vernal pool, important to note that this, the development activity that is closest to this identified pool is outside of its watershed. None of the activity proposed for this lot, none of the land in the area where the activity is proposed, stormwater from that land does not drain to the wetland. The vernal pool is to the northeast. The water from this development drains to the west. Also, the dwelling here is 450 feet away from the pool. Previous, in the previous development, the nearest dwelling was 150 feet. So, we're well over 200% further away from that area. And certainly, we have a very low amount of disturbance within what's considered the critical terrestrial habitat around that pool and well below any threshold where that disturbance would have adverse effect on that pool. So, we, when we look at potential impacts to wetlands and watercourses, we look at what, like four different scenarios, what we call a direct impact. That would be activities in the wetland, crossing, wetland crossing, piping, a stream, something like that. And those activities might occur during construction or after construction, so a short-term activity or a long-term. And again, there's no direct activities with this project. And then in the long-term, or then what we consider what we call indirect activities that might have an effect on the wetland. And those are the activities that occur outside of the wetland, which we've been discussing. And we've talked about the long-term after the project is developed and why I believe that there will not be adverse impacts. And then for the short-term, for these activities that occur outside the wetland, Mark has gone into that in great detail. And as he's indicated, he has quite detailed soil erosion and sediment control plans. And as he's noted, that certainly there's a reason to be concerned here with steep slopes, highly erodible soils in certain areas. And, but, by, with his plan and his proposal to reduce the amount of disturbance to very small areas at any one time before opening up another area, this can and will be controlled and will avoid impacts to the wetlands and watercourses. And one thing with regard to erodible, highly, what's been put into the record as highly erodible soils, that those generally occur and I think the map that was submitted is quite a general mapping of the site. It's not a specific mapping. It's not based on the topography of this survey that you have before you. It's based on the soil survey by the NRCS, National Resorts Conservation Service. And those maps are quite, they're really just for general planning. And what those maps indicate is that you have some steep slopes on this site. But what's important to note is that in most of those areas where you have a high potential for erosion, it's where you have primarily either rock outcrop, where you have shallow soils on top of rock. And where we need to work in those areas and the few areas where we work in areas like that, where we're putting in the driveways, if we were to just remove the vegetation and leave the soil a shallow soil on top of a steeply sloping rock, yes, that soil would erode very easily. But what's going to happen is that once we get in there to work in those areas, we're going to remove the soil from that shallow, steeply sloping rock so that we can then begin to remove the rock. And once you remove the soil from the surface in those areas that we're working, then it's not, there's not a potential for it to erode. And in the areas where we need to bring soil back in to level things off, that'll be done in a very controlled lift and under very controlled circumstances. So, I think, yes, there are some areas where there's potential for soil erosion at a higher level, but because of the proposed method and sequencing and phasing of construction, we can eliminate and avoid the issues related to soils that have a high potential for erosion. So, and that... There's one other alternative that I'd like to note that we discussed in our, in our report in addition to the alternatives that Mark mentioned. And that alternative deals with lots 2, 3, 2, 3, and 4 in this area where they have three driveways making their way up the hill. We'd certainly be open to having just one driveway come up and then extend off to, to the, I have a shared driveway up to this area where approximately where Lot 2 and 4 are. And avoid the disturbance associated with the lower parts of the driveways for Lot 4 and Lot 2. However, it's my understanding that that type of arrangement is not allowed through, as of right, with the town's planning and zoning regulations. And Mark can provide additional information. He has more knowledge about that than I do. So, but if the P&amp;Z were to find that to be acceptable, we would certainly do that. That would reduce the amount of impervious cover, reduce the amount of disturbance even further. But even with, even if we weren't able to do that, again, I still find that due to the very low density of development on this property, the very low area of impervious surfaces and the very careful and sequenced and phased construction and implementation and monitoring and maintenance of soil erosion and sediment control measures, I find that this project will not adversely affect wetlands or watercourses.
Thank you, Bill.
Answer any questions that you might have.
Great, Bill. Mr. Chairman, I just can just follow up on one thing. And this is just an offer to this commission. And to Bill's point, years ago, it was allowed where you could have a common driveway in town. And that was abolished some years ago and for reasons that are not, really are not a wetlands issue. But I know that the town has implemented their Plan of Conservation and Development and there are certain recommendations within that plan that I believe that the commissions in town would reconsider that opportunity. And I will say this, is that given that opportunity, and I'm saying in short order, and that's something that's going to be three or four or five years out, but if the town's land use commissions would rally together and actually adopt a common driveway option, specifically that would address sites such as this, I will tell you that I know my client would be committed to come back to this commission to demonstrate, to show that.
Right, and that would be fine. It wouldn't change the approval of the subdivision.
No, it would not.
Right, so that's something for the future. You know, I have a little issue that I need to deal with. That is, we have three people waiting for our regular meeting. And I don't want to unduly make them wait because this thing's going to go on, I can tell. I'm going to ask the commission, you all did site walks for 30 Falls Road, 32 Apple Lane and 85 Wellers Bridge Road, correct?
Russ, this is John. I took a look at Apple Lane and Wellers Bridge Road.
And do you believe they're regulated where we really need to have them?
No, no, I don't.
So, we could have John approve that?
John Cody, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
John could approve anything that's not regulated and doesn't have a potential impact. So, you're good with Apple Lane and Falls Road?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Not Falls Road, I'm sorry, Apple Lane and Wellers Bridge Road.
Okay, who did Falls Road?
Are you talking about East Flag Swamp, Russ?
It says 30 Falls Road, Extend Driveway and Prepare House Site. I don't see East Flag Swamp Road on there.
Hello?
Charlie, did anybody come out to look at that?
Yeah, Andy did.
Yeah, not Falls Road though, Russ. It was Flag Swamp, East Flag.
Oh, then the agenda has the wrong address.
It has my home address on it, yeah. Yeah.
I was going to say, how are you going to extend your driveway, Charlie?
Done.
Sorry, that's my fault.
All right, well, we can fix it.
It's a mistake.
So, Andy, do you have any issues with that site?
I think it should be a regulated activity, but I don't have big issues beyond that. I just, I think John needs to keep an eye on it. And I do have some questions about the drainage design, largely about, you know, the roof drainage design.
So, that should come to another meeting, right? We should...
I think that should come to a regular meeting, yeah.
Because all we can do tonight is accept the application. And then we, do you want to ask, tell Charlie what you're looking for so the next meeting he's prepared?
Sure, I mean, Charlie, you have a bunch of infiltrators spec to handle their roof runoff.
Right.
And I would like to know more about the design there. Who designed them? Was that designed by an engineer? I know you said that you'd pulled some information from New Jersey specs, but I'm not sure how that plays with Connecticut law.
The design on the roof was based on the plan, the engineered plan that was previously on the lot. So, I used his numbers and then I sized the infiltrators. I'm a licensed septic installer, so I have the credentials to size the infiltrators. But it was based on roof area and the same formula that the engineer used based on the soil permeability and the perk.
When was that design done?
That design was done in 2004.
Yeah, that's where I'm unclear. I don't know if the laws have changed in 16 years.
So, Charlie, what we're going to do is after the public hearing, we're going to go into a regular meeting. So, you don't have to sit on the phone. And we will accept your application, but there will be, you'll have to come back to the next meeting by law.
Okay.
We can't approve regulated activities at the first meeting. We have to give the public 15 days to request the public hearing, things like that. But hey, I'm watching you sitting on here for hours unless you're interested in the...
You know, I think I can find better entertainment, thank you.
You know, so, and to the other two, if they're on, Sturgis and...
Yes, yes, we are. Yes, yes, we are.
You, you guys are good to go. I'm going to have John just sign off on them. I'm going to take a look, look at the sites myself just to make sure. But within a week, we'll have you taken care of, okay?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and again, I didn't want you sitting on, because this is going to go on till at least 10 o'clock, I'm sure.
We, we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah. Okay, we'll continue with the public hearing. I thank everybody from the public for allowing me to kind of think of other people sitting there listening to something.
Eva, just one quick question. I just want to make sure that we're all set there on Wellers Bridge Road in terms of, you were just talking before, earlier.
Yes, you're, you're all set. John could sign off on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Give us a week on that, and we'll get it done.
Okay, no problem. Thank you very much.
No problem. Okay, so we'll continue with the public hearing. The applicant has made their presentation. So now I want to hear from the commission on the sightwalk, okay? So Rob and I did a sightwalk. So Rob, I'll let you speak. Did you have, do you have any questions for the applicant? Or did you see anything that causes concern that needs to be addressed before we vote on this?
My only question in listening to the experts, Mark, in the 300-foot development of the driveways, is that per lot or total for the site?
That's on a per lot basis. Because the lots are going to be, they're going to be sold.
Right.
So we're going to control each lot.
Okay, so, so there could at one time be 1,800 lineal feet of driveway disturbance.
You know, if that's it, my client's going to be really happy.
Okay. I just, I just wanted a clarification of that. In walking the site, I, I thought it was a, a good plan. I did have a question on, I think there were some stone walls that act as buffers between driveways and wetlands.
They do, Rob. Remember lot one?
Yes.
Lot one had a stone wall.
I think that's important to, to note. I thought, I thought the driveway placements were good. I think it would be a real win-win if the town land use commissions would come to accept the common driveway for the middle three lots.
Yeah.
But I do think that the impervious calculations on this, you know, the, the amount of land and the amount of development is really low.
It doesn't look like it on a map. It really kind of, when Rob and I went out there with RJ, of course, we, it's, it's a lot of land. It took, it took a long time to walk the whole thing. I liked the plan myself where the houses are being situated. Rob and I didn't talk when we were there, because we're not supposed to share any information. But I, I could tell Rob really liked one of the lots, because of the way he was looking around. But, but I agree that, I think it was, based on my sightwalk, based on my review of the whole application, which was tedious and time consuming. I don't really have an issue with the plan. I am interested in hearing from the public and from the other experts, you know, because I, I want to learn everything I could learn. I want to make sure that I'm making the right decision. But after walking the site, I was especially happy to see that the main part of the wetlands, which is a swamp, everything is in front of it. It's, nothing's behind it. There's no way it could be impacted. Where the last application really concerned me because of that swamp. I, I like the fact that it's open space and that whatever's there is always going to be there. So that was our sightwalk. I, I agree with Rob on the walls. I think the walls need to stay as an erosion control measure. I think that needs to be put into any approval, that especially on lot one, because the wall on lot one is, it's a beautiful, like all the farmer walls from the 17, 1800s. It's a beautiful wall, and it doesn't need any maintenance whatsoever. But it will provide erosion control. Even if a contractor makes a mistake, that wall is 100% going to stop anything from impacting that, that wetland in that area. The other areas where, where there's going to be encroachment don't concern me. They're, they're really looking at the lay of the land. Of course, when you look at a map, it looks different. But when you look at the lay of the land and you're there, you get a much better view of it. So Sue and Andy, I, I heard you had a date with, with Mark, and you went out with Mark? Because Rob and I thought we could read a map, and we didn't need Mark. So we went out with just both of us, and we found every lot, every septic system, every driveway. So we had no problem. Andy and Sue, you want to report on that?
I generally agree with what you said. Lot one was the lot that concerned me the most because of how close that driveway would come to the wetlands. I think if this is approved, it's critical that the stone wall between the wetland and the driveway remain in place, and that should be specified as part of the restrictions of any approval. I think that as long as Mark's erosion control measures are observed and implemented correctly on lot one, the main potential for impact would be during construction, not after construction. So that would need supervision. I would really want to have the engineer taking a look at the construction, just to be sure that the erosion control measures are correctly installed and maintained. Otherwise, I thought that the plan was very thoughtful. It worked with the contours of the land, the existing contours, and what felt like a pretty well-thought-out way, far better than the plan that we saw last year. So that's my take on it.
Sue, are you there, Sue?
Yep, I'm here. You can hear me?
Yep.
Um, I, I, yes, I definitely thought that this was an improvement over the previous application. I, walking it, where the houses, where they had the houses situated seemed to be almost the natural, appropriate spots for the houses to go. I do have a concern, as you guys brought it up, as far as the stone walls, because I think that there needs to be something stated that those are going to be kept, because those would be, I think, a great buffer to protect the wetlands. So that was my takeaway on that.
Okay. So that's the commission's two cents. So we'll move on. Marjorie, I'm going to give you the floor and let you speak and your experts speak. I'm hoping Steve could join. Do you expect Steve to be able to make it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Marjorie Shansky for Corax Corporation. I, I want to preface my remarks with saying that the commission's site reporting that just occurred is unprecedented. In my experience, in 35 years, everybody seems to have formed an opinion without all of the evidence having been presented. So I feel as though part of the purpose of the public hearing has been obviated by that conversation instead of asking questions. Nonetheless, we will sally forth because there are some very serious ways in which the conversation needs to be reframed back to your regulations and the law. And, Mr. Chairman, my comments will be pithy.
Thank you.
First, I want to say that we filed a, on behalf of Corax Corporation, a petition for intervention under section 22A19A of the Connecticut General Statutes, alleging the reasonable likelihood of unreasonable pollution on resources of the state of Connecticut that are within your jurisdiction. That petition has factual allegations of the adverse impacts that we are claiming. The petition will be supported by Mr. Trinkas and by Michael Klein, professional wetland scientist and professional soil scientist. Mr. Chairman, you were very gracious at the last meeting to want to accept the intervention before the petition had been filed. I would ask for the formality of now accepting the petition if the commission were so disposed so that we have actual party status.
Okay, we did accept the petition before it was filed, true. I know we have to follow process. The commission did state at the last meeting it would accept any filing. And talking to the town attorney, we, we can't deny that, so it's a, it's just a formality. So, and, and in keeping with that, every file that I received, I sent to your client immediately without him having asked for anything. And anything that he asked for, he got. So obviously, the commission respects the intervenor status. I'll ask the commission, does everybody accept Clorax Corporation as the intervenor on this? Any issues?
I accept it, sure.
I accept it.
I accept it.
Okay.
Very well. Thank you very much.
How do you say it?
Corax.
Corax, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the commission accepts that they are an intervenor, even though we've treated them as such.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, now, under your regulations, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, you indicated that you were going to conduct this public hearing because of the interest in the neighborhood from the prior application. And certainly the statute provides that the public interest is one of the bases on which a public hearing can be held. But I called to your attention in my letter and in the petition that under your regulations, these are significant activities as that term is defined in section 2.1 GG, which I appended to the, to the petition and recited in my letter to you. Because, because there are so many activities having to do with the topography of this site, the steep slopes, the wetlands, the watercourses, and the whole nature of the site and the disturbance that is proposed, that bring the activity proposed within the ambit of significant activity, consequently, two things emerge. The public hearing, which the chair had already called, is required. And a feasible and prudent alternative has to be demonstrated. I think I'll jump to that, even though it's out of sequence a little bit, but it'll keep my comments pithier.
Well, if I can.
Yes.
Just for the record, as you know, it is up to the commission what a significant activity is. It's not up to anybody else but the commission.
But it's defined in your...
Yeah, and it's our, our decision whether it meets our regs or not. Also, it is up to the commission whether we feel an application is complete or not. It's not anybody's call to say that an application's incomplete. But we are in a public hearing, so you mentioned that the, you're kind of setting us up for the next court case. But, but I'm going to beat you to that. The commission hasn't prejudiced itself. The commission reported on a sightwalk that was done specifically for this, for this public hearing. And the commission reported on what their sites were, what they saw, what they felt. The public hearing, the purpose is, is for your experts to change our mind. And you, you're going to have all the opportunity to, to change our mind through scientific fact. I did read through your significant activity statement, and I welcome the commission to read that letter. I don't know if you have, but I don't agree with you. I don't see any significant activity here. I don't see any crossings. I don't see any activity in the wetland. If you look at our regulations, it clearly says activities within the wetlands. We don't have a bridge going up here. We have minor incursions into buffer areas. And I, the commission could change its mind at any time and call this a significant activity, once it gets all the information. But at the original meeting, where we had to make the call, based on what we, we, based on the information we had, we made that call. We made the call that the application is complete, and we made the call that it isn't a significant activity in accordance with the way it's defined in our regulations. But we'll have a public hearing anyway, because there's nothing to hide. And we want all the information to come out, because we know a lot of people are very interested in what's going on on this property. So we've been nothing but open and honest, and we followed our regulations. That's my opinion. Now, the commission, I'll tell you, if during this proceeding, at the end of the proceeding, you change your mind, and you want to change it to a significant activity, because you have to listen to all experts. You can't discount anything an expert says. You could disagree with an expert, but you can't just blow them off. You have to listen to everything they say. And we're like a court here. We're going to listen to both sides, and based on who convinces you better, that's how you, you need to vote, in accordance with our regs. So I, I could go through it line by line, Marjorie. I don't have it in front of me. I'm kind of handicapped, because I'm home, and I don't have all the papers that I would love to have, which I would have at a, a meeting. But I could go through line by line why this is not a significant activity. If you want to do that and go through each one of our activities in, in the regulations, and just state what our regulation says, then the commission will have a sense of whether this application's significant or not. We already, we, we do that for every application we get.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The, the, under section 2.1 GG, significant activity, the first bullet is any activity involving deposition or removal of material which will or may have a substantial effect on the wetland or watercourse or on the wetlands or watercourses outside the area for which the activity is proposed. By definition, the disturbance of this land may have that impact. Doesn't say will have, says may have. That's what makes it a significant activity. Let me also say, and I'm not going to belabor that point, the regulations indeed speak for themselves. But I want to tie that significant activity definition to your definition of regulated activity here in Roxbury, which is section 2.1 BB. And this is correcting the perspective that the applicant has brought to you. The, your jurisdiction is not limited to the wetlands and to examining the upland review area for adverse impacts to the wetlands as a result of activity that may be there. Your, your regulations are wonderfully broad, following the case law of the Aaron case in the 1980s, the Creech case, which I think was in the 90s, and all brought to light in the Prestige Builders case in Ansonia.
Our jurisdiction is to the top of the watershed. We understand that.
You're, you're, any place that activity may occur which could impact the wetlands. So we're not just looking at the dark green. We're not just looking at the light green. We're not just looking at the areas where the upland review area has been encroached upon, if you will, by the design of the subdivision. Anywhere on this site could be deemed to be part of the regulated activity. And that is the perspective that the commission is encouraged to have in protection of the water, watershed and watercourse. Now, it was the applicant himself who brought up the issue of feasible and prudent alternatives. Oh, wait, before I get there, whether an activity is significant, 2.1 GG, is an independent inquiry of whether there is an adverse impact. Just because it's a significant activity doesn't mean there's an adverse impact. This is the scrutiny that the commission brings to bear. And it's why the intervenor takes so seriously the review of these plans on this site. Now, the, what do you call it? Engineer brought up feasible and prudent alternative. Now, the, what do you call it, engineer brought up feasible and prudent alternatives. It was their initiative, but he did it in a way that is not correct. And the reason I say it's not correct is because a feasible and prudent alternative is not an opportunity for an applicant to show you how much worse it could have been done. So yes, this proposal might be deemed to be a feasible and prudent alternative to the original proposal because it seeks to be more protective of the receiving resources. But saying we could do an 830G affordable housing proposal and try to do 30 houses here, that's not a feasible and prudent alternative. It is neither probably feasible from an engineering perspective or economically feasible. So that is just more in the nature of a threat. So a feasible and prudent alternative has to be more friendly to the receiving resource in order for it to get credit for being feasible and prudent. The issue of the open space, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, and it's just what you said, it may not have had any specific significance to you at the time, but you called it, the chair called it a conservation easement. And Mr. Kenny in his reporting calls it an open space lot. The engineer has referred to it as open space, and it is indeed labeled open space. Open space and conservation areas are not synonymous. Conservation areas don't mean that you're inviting the public, but they do mean that they're dedicated in a way that is protective of the resources on them. So if this were a conservation easement, then we might be more assured that lawn clippings, for example, or debris from tree fall during storms and such, weren't going to be deposited there because it would be not permitted to be deposited there. So in order to protect the values and functions of that open space and that vernal pool, which was established through, I think, Mr. Pollack and Dr. Clemmons in the last meeting, in the last application, in order to be truly protective of it, it should be a conservation area. It should be a conservation area, can be private as it wants to be, that doesn't invite the public to it, but it puts certain restrictions on it. So for example, people can't go on and cut a tree there, things like that. So I do want that distinction to hit the light of day because of the disparity of the manner in which it's been discussed. I want to say, although Mr. Klein will say much more about it, I'm a lawyer. I'm not a professional wetland biologist. I'm not an engineer, but I have for the last, this'll be 15 years, taught at the Yale School of Forestry, now called the Yale School of the Environment, Sustainable Development. And we talk about impervious cover all the time. And I'm very familiar with Schuler and the 10% idea of past 10%, you start to get water quality impairment in the watershed. But it's not evaluated on a parcel-by-parcel basis. Whatever the specific imperviousness on this parcel is, does not answer the question on the watershed basis of how protected the receiving watercourses are. I just need to clarify that because I find that to be so misleading to the commission. Oh, 2.4 imperviousness, we're golden. No, we're not necessarily golden because it's the disturbance on steep slopes, it's the highly erodible soils, it's the level of activity, the length of the roads, the open disturbance of the parcel, which my colleagues will discuss with the commission. But I needed to say that because I found it agitating. So again, direct impact's fine. Indirect activities can be adverse to the wetlands, and they can occur from the upland review area or beyond and still be within your jurisdiction and still dictate against approval. The issue of the more than one parcel using a driveway, which section 13.1, I can't remember the rest of the numbers in the zoning regulations, does indeed prohibit. Go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and request it. You don't have to wait for the town to gather itself together. You can state a hardship related to the land, which maybe this falls within that ambit to that board, and request it. And then come back with the reduced imperviousness, the reduced site disturbance, and the reduced number of driveways. And with that, I don't know if Mr. Trinkus is here, but I would give the floor to Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Appreciate those comments. They're gonna be well taken into consideration. You made some good points.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Klein, are you here? Mike? He was here.
Yeah, unmute yourself, Michael.
Unmute. Mike, you're on mute. Julie, could you unmute him?
I did not mute anybody. Let me give it a shot.
Yeah, because he's muted. There we go. There we are, Mike.
Okay.
Hi, Mike.
How are you, folks?
Good, good. Hate this Corona stuff, but we're doing the best we can.
Yes, we all are. My name is Michael Klein. I'm a soil scientist and biologist by education. I'm a registered professional soil scientist and a certified professional wetland scientist with 43 years of experience specializing in the impacts of land development on wetlands and mitigation of said potential impacts. I've reviewed this plan. I've reviewed the reports that have been prepared, most specifically the report by my friend and colleague, Bill Kenny. I disagree with his conclusions, and I will explain why. I think it is important at the outset to elaborate a little bit on some of the points from a procedural standpoint that Marjorie Shansky made. Having spent quite a few years on a commission in a small town, I understand the challenges. I think procedure is really important in making sure that everyone's voices are heard and that all the information comes to the table. I am quite surprised that the proposed work was not considered a significant activity. And just to elaborate, in addition to the section 2.1 GG, paragraph number one that Marjorie read to you, 2.1 GG four of your regulations, further, an additional definition of significant activity is activities that are likely to cause or have the potential to cause substantial turbidity, siltation, or sediment in a wetland or watercourse.
Well, Mike, you're here to tell us why. Because at the first meeting, when the application was accepted, we were told by a professional and a licensed professional engineer, there would be no impact. And that's what we base our decision on. We made the right call. So we don't need to keep hammering that. I think it's incumbent upon you and the intervenor to show us why we're wrong. And we could change our minds. Personally, I don't know how it changes anything.
Well.
We're having the public hearing. There were feasible and prudent alternatives discussed. I understand that the commission cannot approve something if there is a feasible and prudent alternative. I get that. But, you know, the floor is yours. Let's go. Tell me where that impact is. And I have to say this, because I'm considered an expert in this field. I have a geology degree. I have a master's in environmental science. For 35 years, I've been an environmental consultant. So, you know, for the process, I have to state that I would be considered an expert, and I have acted as an expert in court cases. So as an expert, I'm looking at it, and I'm waiting for you to show me where the impact is. I would love to see it.
Well, just not to belabor this point too much, but I think your regulations, just like virtually every other set of regulations I've seen across the state, talks about will or may or has or has the potential to cause, and I think even Mr. Kenny and Mr. Lancore's testimony was that these proposed activities here certainly have the potential to cause substantial turbidity, siltation, or sedimentation to a wetland or watercourse down gradient. I'll just leave it at that. So as we know, the wetlands and watercourses on this site, but also downstream of the site, on the west side of Route 199 North Street, provide important functions and values at a principal level. These functions and values include wildlife habitat support, aesthetics, production, export, fish habitat, pollutant transformation, open space recreation, stormwater renovation, and nutrient uptake. So this is a significant wetland system. The fact that the applicant has protected the upper portion of this system while it's an improvement doesn't obviate the concern for water quality, sediment, and erosion control impacts to the wetlands that are down gradient of the work. The fact that some of the work within 100 feet of the wetlands does not drain directly to the wetland does not eliminate the likelihood or the potential for adverse impacts from erosion and sedimentation to downstream resources, all of the disturbed area on the site. And I believe that information that the applicant could provide in terms of the total volume of earthwork required on this property would very quickly convince most experts that this is a significant activity that has the potential for adverse impacts down gradient, particularly on a site with such steep slopes, such a large area of shallow soils, shallow hardpan, bedrock outcrops, and particularly highly erodible soils. I was a little bit taken aback by Mr. Kenny's statement that they didn't have to worry about erosion because they were gonna strip all the soil off of all the shallow to bedrock areas. Don't worry that these are highly erodible soils because they're gonna take them all away. That suggests that the area of disturbance is very substantial, and I think that that's an important, in addition to earthwork calculations, it's important for this commission to have that information. Because clearing and grubbing of the existing forest cover, which is mentioned in your regulations specifically as a regulated activity, regardless of whether or not it's within a wetland or within 100 feet of a wetland, will expose large areas of bare, highly erodible soil to erosion. And the cuts and fills proposed here are very, very substantial, over 20 feet in at least one case. The fact that the building pad sites are relatively level, that those have been chosen is certainly an improvement over the previous application, but you still have to get to these building pads, and that is the crux of the concern that we have. Due to the site conditions that I've noted, the seasonal high water table, highly erodible soils, and very steep slopes, and I'll just make it a brief aside here, I was, as I reviewed the plans, I didn't see anything that indicated what the criterion that Dymar used for steep slopes. I heard it tonight in the presentation, and I was taken aback. Your zoning regulations identify slopes greater than 15% as steep slope. I believe Mark Lancore's testimony was that they included only slopes that are greater than 25% as steep, which is extremely steep and is a much more liberal definition than is typically implemented, in my opinion, and in my experience. So by avoiding or minimizing their activity on those slopes that are greater than 25%, there's still a very substantial amount of activity on slopes that are steep, that are greater than 15% as defined in Roxbury's regulations. The driveways are long and steep. I will let Steve Trinkus give you an explanation of why he's reached a conclusion that the stormwater runoff best management practices are not adequate, but like Bill Kenny, who has relied on his client's engineer to say that they are adequate, and I will point out that his conclusions all are based on the assumption that those measures are adequate. I will also rely on Steve's professional opinion that they are not adequate. And therefore, the project is likely to result in increases in peak rate and volume of runoff. And it's not just peak rate. Volume is a very significant factor in channel erosion, stream bank erosion. That's why the stormwater manual talks about a channel protection volume. So that, in our opinion, these increases in peak rates and volume of runoff will result in pollution and degradation of wetlands and watercourses down gradient. I understand that the chair has said that they deem the application complete. Again, in my opinion, it is incomplete because it does not fully identify the regulated activities, which are defined in your regulations as those which have a reasonable likelihood of causing an adverse impact in the absence of regulation. And your regulations further go on to describe these activities to include clearcutting or grubbing of land and excavated or filled land where the ground cover has been destroyed or removed and has the potential to adversely impact wetlands and watercourses. There is absolutely no doubt that the excavations and fills proposed on steep, highly erodible soils required to develop lots, one through four, have at the very least the potential to result in significant erosion with subsequent sedimentation and pollution of wetlands and watercourses. There are a number of other measures that, in my opinion, make the application incomplete. They're not as straightforward as this because they're not specifically identified in their regulations, but I believe an application on a sensitive site like this should include, as I mentioned, computations of area and volume of cuts and fills and areas in which ground cover is gonna be removed. The details of the temporary sediment traps, merely calculating the volumes necessary, doesn't show that there are adequate areas where they can be located that can meet those requirements. I believe that given the relatively detailed nature of the narrative for the sediment erosion control plan, this commission should require, at the very least, if they approve this application, a bond for implementation, and I believe the estimate of the cost of implementation of the plan, including the onsite monitoring that is identified as an integral measure, needs to be provided to this commission. There are soil test pit data for some of the stormwater management measures, but not all of them. That needs to be provided. We also heard today, maybe this was obvious to the engineer, but it wasn't obvious to me, that they're gonna be running a rock crusher on this site. And in Mr. Lancore's response letter, he mentions that the cuts and fills that are shown, the side slopes, aren't gonna be as lengthy in soil because they're gonna be rock excavations. Well, if that's the case, and if his opinion is based on the fact that there's gonna be rock cuts instead of earth embankments, he needs to show us the data to indicate that that's the case with test pit data where the ledge is. But secondly, the volumes of rock to be removed and the amount of time and effort necessary to crush that rock, where the crushers will be located, how the wash- where the crushers will be located, how the wash water will be handled, which has a high degree of silt in it, and has a very, very high potential to adversely affect water quality and pollute the wetlands. All of that information and the areas where these activities are going to occur needs to be described. I applaud the vague commitment to use floculents, but I have used them on many sites where the soils are fine and are difficult to remove by conventional measures. Just for the commission's awareness, for those of you who aren't as experienced as the chair, silt fence is kind of a misnomer. It doesn't remove silt. The mesh and silt fence is larger than silt particles. It removes very fine sands. But in a site like this where these soils have a very high amount of silt, there's substantial turbidity that will occur even after passing through a silt fence or a temporary sediment trap. The use of floculents can improve that quality, but those measures need to be designed. They need to be, there needs to be adequate areas for the floculated sediments to be filtered out. There are designs of those filtration measures to remove the flocked sediment, but they require largely level areas and a fair amount of space. And the site is highly constrained. So I think a demonstration that the use of floculents will actually is feasible on the site and will serve to control the sediment is lacking. The concerns that I have with respect to erosion sediment control recognize the fact that the 2002 guidelines are guidelines. They are not specific regulatory requirements. But in the case where you have a site where significant earthwork is required on steep, highly erodible soils with a seasonal high water table, any deviation from those guidelines should be properly demonstrated to provide at least as effective a treatment as the guidelines. And we do not see that here.
Hey, Mike, all this is in your letter, correct, that you've submitted?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Let me know if there's anything new that you're adding.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like the record to very clearly state that, based on all the factors I've enumerated, it's my professional opinion that there will be adverse impacts to wetlands and water courses. It will occur both during and after construction. And those impacts include decreased water quality, increased channel and bank erosion and downgrade in water courses, impairment and loss of aquatic and bentic habitat, and smothering of wetland vegetation, that there's a, the significant activities that are proposed have a high potential for adverse impacts, and they're reasonably likely to result in unreasonable impairment, pollution, and destruction of wetlands and water courses. Based on the information that I've heard tonight, there are a couple of other points I would like to make. I wholeheartedly concur with Ms. Shansky's opinion regarding the, what I would consider to be the improper use of the watershed impervious coverage information. Again, it's not just that that's on a watershed by watershed basis, and this is a site-specific analysis. But in this particular case, this site is not typical. It's, as we've said, extremely steep, highly erodible soils, very deep and extensive earthwork required. So the idea that because the impervious surface is less than 10%, that the water quality down gradient would be protected without measures is, I think, stunning, stunning to me, and I wholeheartedly disagree.
Hey, Mike, just for the record, you've walked the site, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I've.
Just wanted that on the record.
Yeah. I understand the commission's opinion, and I agree with it that individual site plans should be reviewed once the final details are worked out. But there are some issues you need to understand about that. As you need to, in my opinion, the applicant needs to demonstrate that the plan he shows us here is able to be implemented without adverse impacts. Because on a site that's as constrained as this, there are very few alternatives for changing the configurations of the house, the septic system, and the driveway. And it would be very easy for someone to, I believe, to present a plan that shows that there's no feasible and prudent alternative to develop the house that they want to build that requires impacts that exceed what are shown here. So I think you do need to be a little bit careful about that.
I agree.
I think if the applicant is relying on this plan to demonstrate that there's no significant impacts to the critical terrestrial habitat, and therefore no significant impacts to the vernal pool, then that critical terrestrial habitat needs also to be encumbered by a conservation easement in order to support that opinion. The fact, you know, and I will think that, I will say that I think that the report from Bill Kenny is a little bit too closely focused on the prior application. The fact that we don't have a road at this point in time is not a reason to suggest that the commission's concerns and the relevant environmental concerns have all been addressed. They do not guarantee that there are no adverse impacts. I would also suggest that there are a number of items in his Table 3, which I, his conclusions, which I disagree with. For example, looking at the denial comments, number one, feasible and prudent alternatives, and Mr. Kenny says it's been addressed. We believe it hasn't been addressed at all. We believe that the alternative of using a, at the bare minimum, a common driveway to address lots 2, 3, and 4, or the elimination of lot 3 and combining of the driveways for lots 2 and 4, needs to be, that alternative is definitely feasible. It's prudent from the standpoint, feasible meaning technically capable of being accomplished. That's what the definition is. Apparently my picture has gone away, but that's okay. You don't need to see me any longer. So it's definitely feasible. And prudent is defined as reasonable in light of the environmental costs versus the environmental benefits, and the societal benefits. And certainly by reducing the cost of construction and by reducing the potential adverse impacts, in my opinion, the likely adverse impacts, that's a prudent alternative. There is absolutely no reason why the applicant cannot go to the ZBA and request a variance, and then come back to the commission rather than do it the other way around. They don't need to change the regulations. It's a very simple process. This site cries out for a variance due to the unique characteristics of the property. And that's one of the criteria for variance, and Marjorie will, can explain that to you further if you need that. Again, looking at the list of denial comments in Table 3 in Kenny's report, one of the reasons for denial was the plans don't meet the guidelines or the stormwater manual. Mr. Kenny believes they do. We believe they do not. Again, the number three, the zoning regulations require compliance with the guidelines. We believe that they don't meet either the guidelines or the stormwater quality manual requirements, and therefore, that should be a no. Number five is irrelevant under this plan. Number six is irrelevant under this plan, although I would argue that it has some relevance in terms of the, in terms of the protection of the critical terrestrial habitat for the vernal pool. Number eight, lots and related development are configured and proposed on steep, highly erodible soils without sufficient stormwater and soil erosion measures, given the high quality of the wetlands at risk. Again, we believe, all I have to do is look at the grading proposed on the site and how steep those driveways are, and the slopes, the long lengths of slope that are proposed without proper measures, to believe that that issue has not been adequately resolved. And if you look at number nine, the applicant must demonstrate that the design proposed does not result in adverse impacts, not that another design, i.e. the past design, has more impacts. I would be happy to answer any questions the commission may have, although if Steve joins us, maybe it's appropriate for him to be on at this time, whatever your pleasure is, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to wait for Steve and give the public a chance because it is getting late, and our Zoom ends, our Zoom runs out around 10 o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, I agree that it would be good to get to the public. I just want to make three observations. It's true that the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control 2002 guidelines are guidelines, but they are a reference standard in your regulations at Section 7.3 K10. And non-consistency with them in the original application stood as the second reason for denial. And as Michael just said, we believe that non-consistency still exists, but it is in your regulations, so it's not merely a guideline. It is a reference standard.
Understood.
Two other things.
I stand corrected.
The application, the applicant has the burden of establishing their eligibility for the permit, period, exclamation point. I provided a denial motion just for the convenience or interest of the commission, which is inspired by the 2018 denial motion, so much of which is still in play. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we'll continue the conversation, perhaps after the public.
Okay. So, Ms. Lacy, I think you're up first. I need you to, Liz, are you there? Do we have to unmute her? Let's see if she's still here. Yep, she's on, I see you on.
You need to unmute herself.
Yeah, you need to unmute yourself, Liz. There you go.
Okay, I would like to speak, but in the interest of time, I would like, for example, Margaret to speak before me. If I don't speak in the end, I'm okay with it.
No, okay. Yeah, I'm just going by a list. It doesn't matter.
I'd love to speak, but in the interest of time, start with Margaret or someone.
All right, Margaret Minor. Margaret, would you state your name and where you live?
Margaret Minor, Roxbury. I have a question.
South Street, right? South Street, Margaret, for the record.
Yeah, 53.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I have a few questions that just came up in the course of the presentation, which often one can ask during a intermission or whatever. If I ask those questions now, will they come off my three-minute time?
I'm not going to put a three-minute time on you, Margaret. Just keep it on track. Let's not talk about it.
I'll ask those questions now, and then other questions might be answered later. So I'll give my more general comments toward the end, if that's all.
Yeah, I mean, if you speak, it doesn't mean you can't speak again. And the way it's looking, because there's been an enormous amount of information in tonight, they're probably going to have to go to next month. So I'm not going to limit people's, everybody needs to be heard.
I will be.
And if you need to be heard twice, you'll be heard twice.
Let me just ask a few questions that came up in the presentation, and then, and I could be pithy, and then be more pithy, more pithy later. For Mr. Kenny, I thank you for the good work that you do on environmental issues. I have two questions. One is, and it is a little bit more general, when we're talking about extreme earthwork, regrading, blasting, excavating, the comments only address surface water impacts, is there any point at which the, under the soil hydrology that may affect the wetlands, is that ever considered? And I'll just mention that the last time, we brought in a letter from Gary Robbins at UConn concerning the effects of blasting on groundwater and groundwater wells. My second question is, you said quite often, when we do this, when we do that, and it sounded very good. But will you be doing the work? And will that, you know, will you be the one in charge of these decisions? Or is that just the intention at this time?
Bill, you still out there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't sure if you wanted to wait till all the questions were done, or I'd be pleased to take them as they come.
One at a time, I think. Margaret, how many questions do you have? You don't want to ask them all at once, do you?
Well, I just had those two questions for Bill Kenny.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah.
The project, with regard to who will be doing the work, I am doing currently a review of the proposed plan. If, as a, I'm not a contractor. I'm an environmental consultant, landscape architect. But someone with my expertise, I do recommend that during construction, and it has already been proposed by Mr. Lankor, either someone with his expertise or my expertise, should be doing some regular monitoring of the soil erosion and sediment controls, and working with the contractor, whoever that might be. And of course, that contractor will be working closely with the town.
Okay, I heard that. So I'm satisfied with that answer. My second question, to what extent, to what extent do wetlands commissions or your work have jurisdiction over site work, driveway work, that is, may affect, or is very likely to affect, the groundwater hydrology that is adjacent to or may run into wetlands?
Is that a question for me, Margaret, for the commission?
Well, the, it came up when I was listening to Mr. Kenny, but if you want it for the commission, I'll pull that back now because I had a similar question before. So for the map, for the map, I had questions, I had a couple of comments as I looked at it, as Mr. Lankor was making his presentation. Yeah, the first thing I looked for in the open space was a conservation easement, because in my experience, that's the only protection that is reliable. He, I think I understood Mr. Lankor to say that on the west side of the road, there are three discharge pipes that run into the west side of the road, the woods property. I think I heard you say, Mr. Lankor, that these come together. Now, looking at the Wakely site, there is a huge, to my mind, discharge, two discharge pipes going into it. And I thought one of the points that was being made when that was developed was that it did not come together, that that water, and I'm wondering if this is true because I look at it, but that that water did not come together with wetlands or go into the street from that location. So I'm wondering why you said, or maybe you didn't mean to say, that the flows will come together.
The, Mark Lankor, for the record, the flows, if you looked at, and unfortunately don't have it, but if you take a look at the original wetlands map that was provided for the western side, all of these wetland systems all come together at some point. all of these wetland systems all come together at some point, they all integrate with each other. And then ultimately, they, they end up down at the brook. So, there's nothing, there's nothing here to mislead anybody, but it does, when you take a look at the wetland system in totality, they all do integrate together with each, with each other.
Well, I hope that the water coming into the northeast corner out of two town discharge pipes is not frequently coming together with the wetlands on that property. Steve Trinkhaus mentioned on, I think, almost the last page of his comments, that there was a stream that had not been marked. He said, why was this stream not marked for wetlands? Did you see that comment? And is there an issue there?
There, there is absolutely no issue there. That is a, up on the northern edge, towards the east edge, where you have the, the wetlands, and then there's a discontinuation between that and the wetlands to the south. There is an intermittent water course that connects those two points. And we took the liberty of, by field investigation, looking at it, it's actually connecting those two points. The prior application, which was before the commission, did not recognize that until at the very last meeting of the hearings, in which they brought it up, but it, the mapping was never actually amended accordingly. So, we've added that to the, to the plans, but again, it's, it has no bearing on the application, because that water course is on the other side of the ridge.
So, so this, I remember there was a sort of ghost's intermittent stream the last time you were here, so you're saying you added it, but it's not relevant?
No, no, it, it really isn't relevant, because it's, it's not within the, it's on the other side, we're not draining to it. We have no direct drainage to that system at all.
But we are showing it as a regulated area on the property, but, but our work is outside, it's more than 100 feet away, for the most, there's just a small area. None of our project's draining to that.
Right, but the area is shown on the map, and you will be marking the street.
It's already shown on the map.
Yeah, yep.
Oh, well, I guess Mr. Trinkhaus was, was wrong.
No, he just asked, he's just asking why there's no other additional wetland flags between the two points.
Right.
That's all.
That's, I guess that's my question, but it'll be answered later. I noticed that for, at five acres of disturbance, there's what, an Army Corps?
No.
No, deep, it's a deep permit required.
A deep, a deep permit?
Under that, under five acres.
And you came in at 4.7?
No.
You have wetlands disturbance 4.7? Anyway, you'll be going to, you'll be going to deep for that permit?
No, we don't need to go to deep for any permit, except for a SWIP general permit for construction activities, that's it.
The general permit, yes.
But that's, that's a common, that's a common element for anything with disturbance limits, in particular between two and over five acres. And there's a certain SWIP requirements, which again, is, there's another, and this, I think it's important even for the commission to note this, that's just another level of oversight, because not only does this commission look at our erosion control plans, when you file a SWIP permit, you actually, you have to provide the same, and they have opportunity to make comment or to make adjustments to that SWIP and conditions. But the general permit has specific conditions, and part of those conditions are the heavy monitoring.
I've actually worked on writing many general permits, so I know what conditions there are and what follow-up there is and so forth. But you agree you're going for the general permit on this?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And I only had, okay, that was, those were my questions. I, I'd like to make some comments later, but those were the questions that came up when the experts were talking.
Are you done, Margaret, or?
Yeah.
What do you mean, later?
Well, I had general comments that I'd like to either summarize or maybe expand, or maybe.
Absolutely, go ahead and do it.
No, I'd rather, I'd rather do it after I've heard the rest of the presentations and other questions. I came on first.
Understood, okay, that's fine.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Suzanne, I think you're next to speak. You did submit a letter, right? I read your letter.
Yes, I did.
So you want to go next?
Sure, I do, actually, I haven't really even looked at the questions on the letter, because so many questions have newly come up in the light of the experts' testimony and such.
Would you state your name and where you live for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Suzanne N. Koerner, K-O-E-R-N-E-R. My property is 197 North Street, Roxbury. It is my full-time, year-round residence since 1996.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My questions are, not a lot was discussed about blasting, and it concerns me about the water table and blasting. When will that be made available, the details on that, since most of this property will have to be reconfigured, rearranged?
Mark, do you want to ask, answer to that?
So I'm trying to understand the question.
Well, the, the experts in the commission really haven't dealt with the fact that so much of the property is accessible only by blasting. With the exception of number five and number six, all other driveways, to my knowledge, based on spending an hour and a half with the maps at the town hall, seem to have ledge, significant ledge, that will have to be blasted, including, but not limited to, the ledge that is directly on Route 199, south of the White House slated for demolition for sight, sightline purposes. And all of that drains south into wetlands. And equally, Margaret just spoke of it and the quality of the water and how it's affected through blasting, and blasting is a very big concern of mine for those reasons. Water quality, I live here, it's my family, as well as, you know, the, the families that will be buying these properties and the properties on the west side, you know, their water quality. So I think that's a huge issue to, to even access the beautiful level plots, which I'm sure have been thoughtfully laid out. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful plan, but, you know, really, to get to it is, is, I don't know that blasting's been dealt with quite as much as it should be. And I, I guess when, what part of the process will that be dealt with? You know, and, and does that have any bearing on whether this plan is approved or not approved? And secondly, I have a concern about the wetlands that are, I can get a tape measure out, but driveways number one, two, three, and four, again, once you get rid of the ledge, they, they will be draining into the wetlands, because I live on the west side, and I know exactly the topography over here, the ledge that my home sits on, and then it drops off into poorly draining loam, and then the wetlands go back into the said streams that we've been discussing. How much consideration to that? I mean, it's, it is 100 feet from a wetland. It, it's Route 199 is the width from wetland to wetland on driveway one, two, three, and four. And then, of course, you know, north of that as well. But I, I understand, it was said by Mr. Kenny, that the, the drainage would be, the runoff would be directed away from the wetland. Is that good for the wetland? You know, like, is it, is it good to manage the water that goes into the wetland? I'd like that to be, you know, studied. I, I don't know that managed water, I don't know how, I, I just don't know enough about it, but like I said, I do live here, I'm familiar with all the wildlife, the birds that live here, the birds that migrate through, all of the wildlife, including stuff that is fed directly from those Vernal Pool stuff there. And I guess, I, you know, I guess I have a lot of questions. I was going to stick to my questions, but, you know, the experts raised so many new questions that, you know, I, I really can't see how this is not, this activity is not significant. I mean, there's wetlands right directly across the street from driveways one and two. I, I mean, it's less than 100 feet directly across. So I, I guess that, I, I don't know, you know, I'm not a lawyer or a professional, I just, I don't think that the application can hold as it is, because again, there are wetlands across the street. So I guess that needs to be considered, and very little was talked about. You know, I believe it was Mr. Kenny that stated the percentages of the 64.8 acres, he stated, and forgive me if I've got this wrong, I have about 50 pages in front of me that are not my own, they've been notes, again, taken from the professionals, that he stated 11 and a half acres was slope, 22 acres was the area upland, the acreage upland area, quote unquote, and 4.7 would be the wetland affected. Well, he stated the bedrock, but he didn't state the percentage of that. I mean, if you do the math for just the three areas that he did state, 22, 11 and a half, 4.7, that's about 38 acres of a 64-acre area. And again, I, I'd like, I, I think that's important to know how much of the bedrock, percentage of bedrock. And, um, I guess, I guess I have, you know, he, oh, Mr. Kenny also went on to state that the, the plan, although, you know, is definitely different, they do have the houses, and it's kind of hard to imagine what he was saying based on what I'm looking at, and I mean, I have my own pictures as well. But he said that, you know, they improved it by removing the White House, and so technically, it's only five new driveways, not six new driveways, which is completely in, it's, it's not true at all. It's not true at all. That driveway number four goes up. That, that driveway number four goes up about 1,200, well, exactly, 1,200 feet long. So where, right now, as it stands, it's a little short driveway on grass. So that cottage will definitely be affecting the wetlands as soon as that cottage property, as soon as trees start coming down to make room for driveways for number six specifically. I don't know, I think there are a lot of unanswered questions, and I, I support, of course, we haven't heard from Mr. Trinkus, but I support Mr. Klein in, in a lot of what he said, this, you know, it's all logical, and there have been a lot of unanswered questions. So, you know, I, I don't know where to go from here. This obviously does affect me, obviously, you know, the, the water quality, I mean, you got a double A rated stream up there, that you're going to have two houses plus that number three house. You know, you say it doesn't drain into it, you know, and all the great engineering and so on and so forth. I don't know. It would be a shame if water quality was affected for all these families that will be able to enjoy our town. I do hope that the commission does review my letter line by line, because it does have a number of valid questions in it, which I would like to be able to address at some other time, since we are on such a tight time schedule, based on what the chairman has said, that 10 o'clock is. And I wonder, how will we be part of the meeting if we're not here at 10 o'clock for the public? That's a serious question. I mean, will I be able to call in, or how will I still be on the meeting?
I'm sorry, Suzanne, I, I don't know, there's a lot of background. I don't understand that question, how do you call in?
The question is, you said 10 o'clock our Zoom conference ends, but you will be.
We'll, we'll end the public hearing and we'll continue it.
Oh, I see. And that'll all be on the record, and I can get that?
Yeah, just like this, it'll be noticed and, yep.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't, you know, I, I don't understand how a professional can say there will be no impact on, I just don't understand it. But again, first and foremost, the very driveways will be within 100 foot of the wetland. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, Liz, do you want to be next?
Will you answer any questions? And I, I will.
Hi, and thank you. I'm sorry I put Margaret on the spot, but I thought we were running out of time, and I do think of Margaret. I know Margaret, she's an expert, I know, I've seen state officials get her recommendations, and I know she's gotten awards, but I didn't mean to put her on the spot just then. And I wanted to thank you, Russ, for, I've been, I've been semi-active in this in the beginning, and you granted us the very first public hearing. I'm, I obviously am not an expert, I'm a, I'm a resident on Wakely Road for 30 years, and I have a really old house that's 200 years old, and are a very successful neighborhood that's 20 years old. And I'm next to a cul-de-sac, and this isn't a cul-de-sac, but it's on a state road, and I, if this ever gets passed, I think that it, it should be on the record, that, so potential buyers, and I'm going to put buyers in air quotes right now, that they know these driveways, which are, what are they called? Permanent, and they're just always, they're irreversible and irretrievable once they're there. They're, they are on a treacherous curve. One house, if you, if you reduce, just if you remove one house, I don't think it's going to make much difference, but Mark Lankor said at the last meeting, that you are putting your life in your own hands driving out of a driveway there. And it, it's a treacherous road, it's got, it's a, it's 35 miles an hour, but the traffic goes faster. We all know that the cul-de-sac by my house has a cool water truck that barrels down that road six times a day, five days a week, six months out of the year, 1,000 times a season for 20 years, and it is a menace, but what can you do? So that I wanted to say, Margaret's an expert, that is a very bad corner, and I think that's about it, and that, the neighbors are all concerned. We've been concerned from the beginning, we've called public hearings, you've heard only concern, except for maybe from a boutique developer in Washington, but otherwise, people are opposed to breaking through ledge and, and this type of neighborhood on a state road, or even on a cul-de-sac, this isn't very important. But I did want to add one thing, that when we did try to get together, and we did try to preserve it, because it's always been on the plan of conservation and development for 10 years ago, 20 years ago, and somehow not last year, that the town, rather than have a bird in the hand, mentioned that they were waiting for some land by a church, it happened to be the St. Patrick's Church, and so maybe one day the town would buy that land. And I'm saying, this is, this was available, and it, it was always desirable, it's open space, so if some division doesn't make it, I'll be fine with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. Does anybody else want to speak? That's the list, right, Julie? I think I got.
I have Nicole and Alan Kovak.
Oh, Alan, I don't, are you on, Alan? I don't see Alan.
He was on earlier.
Okay, Alan's not here. Does anybody else want to speak?
How do I get back to you?
Pardon? Is that it? Is that it?
Chairman, I might as well take this opportunity to offer my remarks that I was planning at some later time.
Go ahead, Paul.
That's okay with you?
Absolutely. What's the S stand for?
Yeah.
My brain is not working this time of night, or I come up with something clever. I have not. My name is Paul Manson, I live at 29 Forest Farm Drive here in Roxbury. About two years ago, I stood in front of this board representing the Intervena Corax in the matter of the Woodsdale Oatry. You may recall that I said Corax property was barely impacted by the proposed development. This current iteration of the project goes even further to protect Corax's land. However, I said that the whole town was impacted. Sloan property provided double A rated water, a vernal pool, and a variety of living creatures whose endangerment would impact all of us. At that time, the board and Ms. Sloan understood that development was ill-conceived and poorly engineered. In fact, Ms. Sloan had chosen to reject being the engineer. Also at that time, due to the significant wetland impact, prudent and feasible alternatives were required.
Paul, there's a squeaking going on, it's taking away my ability to hear what you're saying. It sounds like a door closing and opening.
Not on my end.
It's not?
No.
Because some people mute their phones because somebody's making a lot of noise and I really want to hear.
I think it's coming from you.
From who?
From Sue, Sue Fitch.
Oh crap.
You mute the phone, Sue? Because your phone does keep showing up. There you go.
It says my microphone is muted?
Not.
Not because you're talking to it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you fine.
All right, but, okay, I'll turn it up, it said I was muted.
Okay, I, I don't know, it might not be you. I just, you know, it's getting to the point where I couldn't hear what Paul was saying and I want to hear what he has to say. So Paul, would you pick it up? You were talking about feasible and prudent alternatives.
I will spare you starting again, but yes, I was. They were provided by the town's expert, Ed Pollak, Michael Klein, and Steve Trinkus. Incidentally, they were not representative of Mr. Lancore's presentation at all. To say that he adopted their alternatives with the addition of one lot is completely misrepresenting what they had said. In any event, in the interest of maximizing our profits, which she is entitled to do and may even be obligated to do to her partners, Ms. Sloan has rejected those alternatives and come up with a new plan. This plan, we believe, again, is likely to significantly impact the wetlands negatively. Its failings were explained to some measure by Mr. Klein and will be further explained by Mr. Trinkus, but include soil failure to follow soil erosion and sediment control guidelines, failure to follow town regulations and using the west side wetlands improperly. I do want to paraphrase the chairman, who previously has said it is not the board's obligation to help the developer maximize our profits. In all likelihood, unlike the previous plan, this one can be re-engineered and reduced in scope to protect our wetlands. May I suggest that it should not fall on the town's residents, and one in particular that I know quite well, on this type of investigation. Regulations should be passed requiring review by independent experts and paid for by the developer on any project of this magnitude or this or any of the reviewing boards. Important also, and this was touched on, oversight by properly trained individuals should be mandated. You have seen and will see again, what one engineer deems adequate, another will find woefully faulty. What is planned is not always built and what is built is not always built adequately. It is also proper that proof of funds be supplied to make certain that protections can be afforded. One last point, the chairman indicated his friendship with Ms. Sloan, but has decided not to recuse himself. I have every confidence that he and the rest of the board will assess these plans with impartiality and on their merits, balancing the equities of development and protection without regard to friendships, without a belief that Ms. Sloan should be approved because she was previously denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else need to speak? Marjorie, is Steve here? I don't think so.
He does not appear to have arrived yet. He's, he's tied up in this other meeting, unfortunately.
Okay, we're gonna, I think the only option then is to end the public, not close the public hearing, but.
Russ?
Yep.
It's Margaret. If there's time and you wanted me to, I could make a few of my comments that I was going to hold.
Well, I, I think you should do it after you hear everything, like you said.
Yep, I would prefer, thank you.
I mean, we, we're going to have to move this public, extend this public hearing to next month because it's obvious that we need to hear from Steve. Unless everybody on the commission feels different, I, I think we should extend the public hearing.
And I did submit general comments, which you have in writing, special comments which you object to, although I have some follow-up comments after hearing the conversation tonight. And so those you have, and then the rest will, if I want to say more, which I will, that will be next time.
Right, so Julie, what's the fourth Tuesday in August?
Fourth Tuesday in August is August 25th.
August 25th? So, I, anybody on the commission feel we should close the public hearing and move to a vote? No. I'm taking that as no, you're all on mute and I'm taking that as no.
No, we should continue the public hearing.
All right, we will continue the public hearing to August 25th at 7:00 PM. Marjorie? If Steve's not going to make it, we'll, we'll make a date where, where he, you know, he's critical at this point, right?
Well, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry, this was a continuation hearing for him in the other jurisdiction. And I'm hoping if they conclude their work tonight that we will become the continuing hearing in this jurisdiction.
Okay, if there is a problem, let me know and the commission will reconvene to set another date so that we can make sure he's there.
We appreciate your flexibility.
I'm sure that Michael should be there because I'm sure that the applicant's consultants will have feedback from the feedback they heard tonight. At least, that's my hope, okay?
Thank you.
So we will continue the public hearing until August 25th at 7:00. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Does anybody know of anybody who wasn't able to get on because of technical problems? Want to make sure everybody could be heard and hopefully you all were, so. All right, everybody, good night and we will see you in August.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Good night.
I think you got a hold because we got to go to a regular meeting. Rob, Sue?
Thank you.
I'm here.
Margaret, you could stay on if you want, I'm not saying you have to get off. I know if I could get off, I would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to take the dog out, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, so do we have a motion to continue the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Second, somebody?
Second.
If I'm seated, Russ.
Oh, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we're going to go into the regular meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and seat Drew, no, John, you, you're joining on, right?
Yeah, I'm back.
Yeah, so Rob, you still here? No, he went home. So I'll, I'll seat John for Rob. So.
Rob's here.
Okay, never mind, we're all here, we have a quorum. Look at the agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from June 22nd. Do I have approval or any comment on those minutes?
Move we approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Woods, Roxbury, it's continued to next month. Jackson, I guess it's Flag Swamp Road, that's going to, we need to accept that application. So it's accepted and we will talk to him next month. Maybe, maybe we set a different day than the public hearing. What does, what does everybody think about having a, a regular meeting a different day than the public hearing?
Well, what about, oh, you already made, we already made the motion and everything because what about having the, that meeting prior to the public hearing?
That's a good idea, why don't we do a 6:30 meeting next month?
Oh God, I wasn't thinking that, but okay.
Why don't you say, Sue?
I'll do whatever you want, I mean.
Well, could we do the regular meeting at 7:00 and then have the public hearing start at 7:30? Could we do that?
Yeah, we could do that. Let's do that.
Are, are we waiting to hear from Steve Trinkus as to whether he's going to be able to accommodate us for the next public hearing?
That's right, and, and we, we, we could set right now, because it is, the woods is on the agenda, we could set the public hearing for 7:30 on August 25th, that's a Tuesday. We'll do that.
The only trouble with that is if we have the regular meeting at 7:00, what if we get more than we currently have? Which the way John Cody's been saying, it's pretty likely.
Well, the other, well, the other thing I have to bring up too is don't we, don't we have to discuss something by the next meeting concerning this application? And we would have to do that after the public hearing too, right?
You're right, you're right.
So I guess, scratch my, I guess, scratch my idea.
Yeah, because I got a feeling the public hearing will go from 7:00 to 10:00.
Yeah.
Because, because the applicant's consultants have to come back. Trinkus has to give his spiel, that'll be an hour, judging on how long it took everybody else.
We're going to go to an in-person meeting next time, that's what you were saying.
Gee, I hope so. But Barbara closed town hall for the summer. I do believe the state allows public meetings now for not more than 25 people. There were 30, 28 all together on the call tonight. And the reason why we didn't go to in-person, if people showed up and couldn't be allowed in, we would still have to give them a way to access the meeting, which should be Zoom, so it wouldn't really help us. But it would be so much easier to do this in person.
I would prefer to keep the Zoom meeting going.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're going to do, Barbara closed town hall till September, so.
I just think it's hard though, it's hard to see some, you know, like to have, I don't know, to go through.
Yeah.
You know, to see some of the visuals, see some of the visuals and to go through the paperwork where you're trying to, like me, I'm having, I'm on my phone because I'm having computer issues, so.
I agree.
You know?
Anyway, Zoom it is.
Zoom it is, we'll have a 7:00, the public hearing, like we said initially. And we will wait on the regular meeting, let's see what comes in. And then if not a lot comes in, we, we could do a short meeting, maybe the night after. You know? Be a rough week for us, but. But we do have to close the public hearing by law next meeting and then vote. It's, we're at the limit.
Okay.
On Apple Lane and Wells Bridge, we're, we're going to tell John to sign off on that. This is, John, since you went and looked at it, if you're good, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I know the properties.
Yeah, okay. But Charlie's got to come in because that is a regulated activity and we can't just approve that.
I think it has to be just because, you know, I think as a practical matter, Charlie has the expertise to design roof drainage, but as a legal matter, I'm not certain that he does. And I think we need to at least discuss that.
Okay. I will talk to an engineer about that, to see who could legally design footing drains and infiltrators.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm wrong about that and it proves to be the case, I have no other issue with that and John could approve it.
Okay. I sure do wish an engineer designed an infiltrator up on Good Hill Terrace, would have saved a lot of aggravation, but, because everybody thinks they can design these things and they really can't, there's a lot, there's a lot more to it than digging a hole and putting a lot of rock in the, in the ground, you know, so. All right, I think that's it then.
I think we're opening up a can of worms here if we don't require him to have an engineer design that with future applications.
That's possible.
I kind of agree. But I'll ask an engineer anyway, but it's come, it'll come to the commission next month. I'm not going to call him until John can approve it. I agree, an engineer should be designing those things, not a septic guy, you know? So, all right, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Bye.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Good night.
Night.